This is the July 14th, six o'clock closed session. We're about to start tonight. There are no members of the public here, I see. Oh, here comes one. I'm Len Welsh, board president. This time I'll take roll call. Director Sheris Watt.
Here.
Director Toomes.
Here.
Director Gillette.
Here.
And Director Cordova's not here, and I understand she's not coming for the closed Dr. Schwartzberg, would you like to make a comment before we go into a closed session? You don't have to.
Nice day, isn't it?
Go ahead, you're up. No? No? High back. Okay, this time we're going to close up shop and go into closed session. Okay, everybody, we'll start now. Welcome to the July 14th, regular open session of the Board of Directors of the Kensington Police Protection and Community Services District. My name is Len Welsh, I'm the board president, and at this time I'll take roll call. Director Sheris Watt.
Here.
Director Toomes.
Here.
Director Cordova.
Here.
Director Gillette. We have a full house, and we just, well, we didn't just, but a while ago we came out of a closed session. We only addressed item 2B, and there's nothing to report on that discussion. The other two items, A and C, didn't come up. I'm sorry, is that better? Do you want me to repeat it? Okay, so we just, we came out of closed session a while ago, we finished a bit early. We did not take up items A and C. We did take up item 2B, and there's nothing to report on that discussion. So at this time, we will entertain public comments if anybody would like to get up and comment on an item not on the agenda. Come on up. Yeah, I've got to get close to that mic, just like I did. Is this any better?
My name is Peter Liddell, I'm with the Kensington Public Safety Council, and I'd just like to tell you a little bit about an upcoming talk we have on August 6th. That's a Saturday, and the talk will be at 10:00 in the morning. Title of the talk is "Wildfires, 'Tis the Season." At this writing, there are at least eight wildfires raging in California. Rains this winter did not end the threat of wildfire, and in some instances, the chances have been enhanced. Underbrush and grasses that have grown higher and thicker will soon dry out. Trees may have been extensively damaged in a way that makes them more susceptible to burning and yet not be immediately evident to the eye. So in this talk, we hope to bring you useful information to help you and your neighbors be aware of the risks around you, and to provide ideas on how you can help lower the risk of fire. So we will have several speakers. Michael Bond, from Elstridocason Fire Department, will be addressing the fire season which is upon us, and how vegetation management plays an important role. He'll be showing films from the 1991 Oakland Hills Fire and the 2015 Lake Fire. John Kaufman and Bob Strayer, through their work with the Sierra Club and the Claremont Canyon Conservancy, have been instrumental in the reduction of flammable invasive species and replacement with fire-resistant natives in Claremont Canyon. That's the canyon up behind the Claremont Hotel. Kevin Hart, our general manager and chief of police, will discuss some possible scenarios for an evacuation should it become necessary. And Ciara Wood is a member of the board for the Diablo Fire Safe Council and a longtime resident of Kensington and fuel reduction advocate. She'll discuss grant monies available to homeowners for fuel reduction. So, once again, it's Saturday morning, August 6th, at 10:00 a.m., and we hope you can all make it. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Hi, I'm Linda Lipscomb. I'm going to use the microphone. I am going to talk about two things. One, probably most of you have seen the letter that I wrote regarding a conflict of interest if Director Cordova did not have a registration and license during the period she was on the board. That letter was published, and a paragraph was left out of it, the editor informed me, due to space limitations. I discussed that it's a conflict of interest in order to, and I illustrated it with some law, and the paragraph that was left out is the law, and I'm just going to read that paragraph, and I have copies of the complete letter for you. In discussing common law conflict of interest of a local official, the California Court of Appeal opinion stated, quote, "The public is entitled to have its representatives perform their duties free from any personal or pecuniary interests that might affect their judgment. Whenever a public official, by reason of personal interest in a matter, is placed in a situation of temptation to serve his or her own purposes, to the prejudice of those for whom the law authorizes that official to act, an individual member ordinarily cannot vote on a matter in which that member is interested," end of quote. And I just wanted to make clear that I didn't just write it based on a recitation of the facts, but that I looked into the law regarding it, and that's what I found, and I have copies to distribute to you. I'll give them to the secretary. After that time, on June 23rd, I wrote to the members of the board, and I discussed the early termination of the meeting that had occurred, and the pledge that had been made by a director never to vote for an extension of the meeting, and its effect in relation to the Brown Act, and in relation to the public interest. I know that you all have a copy of that email, I have a hard copy here. What I wanted to urge is that because this policy allows a termination of the public discourse and the board discourse relating to items which have been agendized, perhaps it is something that should be expedited. I know the revision to the policy manual, policy and procedures manual, has long been delayed. Many other matters have taken up your time, but this may be a policy that ought to be expedited in its review. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
John Garchioni. I've got a few questions, five, and I'll read them off. Why do we have yet another new law firm advising the board? It seems extremely odd that with all the legal talent represented on this board, that we've had so much turnover with regard to retaining legal counsel. We are told that legal firms separating from their clients is not all that unusual, the most common factors being non-payment issues, or a client not heeding the law firm's advice. In our situation, if I was a betting man, I'd put my money on the second reason. Do you think we will be saving money, and the citizens will be provided with the answer to these questions anytime soon? Second question. Why would anyone choose to run for a position on this board? Really? What is the current board saying to the prospective candidates as we begin to focus our attention on the up and coming elections? Is the message, if you succeed in getting elected, and are in total agreement with the board majority, then there is a place for you here? Or, if on the other hand, you are not in agreement and have different ideas, then be prepared to have your life turned hellish? Past board history tells us, that goes double if you happen to be an independent woman. How many have been hounded off the board so far? Third question. Why doesn't the Kensington Police Association, excuse me, Kensington Police Officers Association just get a seat on the board? Since the board majority has apparently ceded control of the Kensington Police disciplinary issues to the KPOA, why not give them a seat on the board? At least then we could see them do their work in front of the citizens of Kensington, instead of the current backroom dealing. Wouldn't that be a better arrangement than we have now? Fourth question. What does a person make of an esteemed Kensingtonian going feral? The scientific mind at work is a wondrous thing to behold, but when we see an esteemed local member of the academic community go off the public rails in a digital public format espousing many of the same ugly impulses the current political dialogues have employed, don't you have to wonder if that person has spent too much time listening to the echo chamber? Fifth and final question. Isn't the board president setting and maintaining the proper civic tone for the board meetings? Every month, and frequently, more often now, the board president's tone lapses into hostility, bordering on vindictiveness. It is now his pattern, as meetings progress, to start making hostile-sounding comments and remarks to other board members and to members of the audience. The most likely time for this behavior is usually close to 10:00, as the meeting is ended. Why can't the meetings end at 10:00, and the tone of the meeting remain civil? Thank you.
Just for the record, I reject every single one of those allegations against me. People can look at the tapes and they can make up their own mind. Come on up.
Good evening, Jim Watt. Len, you don't need to make, take notes, because I have a handout here that'll cover everything that I'm going to say, so. This is the last board meeting that I will be able to attend until October. Therefore, I'd like to give you my take on several important financial issues that I think should be a focus of the board in the next three months. First, the 2016-17 budget. After the June meeting, at which the 2016-17 budget was approved, I found what I believe are some budget errors regarding set-aside sums for capital expenditures. If corrected, this will substantially change the district's estimated year-end balance, and especially the amount of money that will remain in our reserve account. Three weeks ago, I sent Mr. Hart an email summarizing these issues, and he responded that he and Debbie Russell would look into the matter. So far, I have not received, I have received no answer, and I will therefore provide you with a copy of my email, so you can follow up on this matter. A second financial issue that you need to push forward is to authorize a new OPEB actuarial study. The Finance Committee agreed to accept the flawed OPEB report prepared by TCS in October 2015 for determining the account entries for fiscal year ending 2015, with the understanding that after the MOU was signed, another firm would prepare an updated report. The board likewise agreed to this condition. However, since the district's books are now closed for fiscal years 15 and 16, it seems appropriate that a new valuation study should be done for fiscal year 2017. Mr. Hart suggested that the cost for a new study might be $10,000 or more. This may be the cost if we use Bartlett and Associates. However, I'm sure the price will be much less using Nicolay Consulting, who did the OPEB report for the fire district, for a total of $3,400. It's important to complete this OPEB study because the information is needed to finalize a realistic number for the code 521-T in the budget for year 2016-17. A third issue is legal costs. These costs are expected to exceed $250,000 for the fiscal year just ended. This is the third year in a row that legal costs have topped $200,000. These ongoing legal costs must be brought under control. While they appear to be largely due to the constant legal wrangling, brought about by escalating personnel issues, they also result from the board's use of legal counsel to validate every board decision. As a tax-paying citizen, I'm very upset to see my tax dollars squandered in this fashion. My fourth issue is the five-year budget. It is my opinion, this is a very important exercise, because it requires looking at the long-term costs and revenues of operating the district. This has taken on added importance due to the anticipated costs to renovate the community center, and deal with issues surrounding the replacement of the fire station slash public safety building. Long-term budget projections will give us guidance in negotiating the next MOU, starting at the end of 2017, and in discussing the findings of the ad hoc committee. So far, I have seen no serious attempt to complete this five-year plan. Related to the five-year plan is an issue that I have raised on numerous occasions, namely CalPERS' failure to meet their 7.5 percent investment target. According to a front-page article in the Monday Wall Street Journal, which I will provide you, public pension funds are expected to report their worst annual performance in seven years. And, CalPERS' chief executive is quoted as saying he expects their investment return to be flat or zero for the fiscal year ending 2016. A year ago, CalPERS returned just 2.4 percent, and this resulted in an increase in the amount of taxpayer contributions to make up for this shortfall. If we have several more years like this, our pension contributions could increase by several hundred thousand dollars annually, from their current cost of about $450,000 a year. I believe CalPERS is delusional about their 7.5 percent target, and the district should not be lulled into a false sense of complacency. We need to budget for a lower investment target over the next five years, so we can make more realistic budget calculations and decisions concerning our police department. My final comment has to do with the ad hoc committee's report. While I'm impressed with the amount of work the individual members, and Dave Spath in particular, have put into this, I am concerned that an important element is missing. I believe any meaningful discussion of the ad hocs report has to include a survey of Kensington residents to determine the level of police services they believe are needed and affordable. Unfortunately, the survey was done, the survey that was done provides no such insight. I believe a new survey should be conducted that first provides respondents with impartial background information on the existing structure and possible alternatives, and then asks them to choose between various alternatives using cost-benefit comparisons. It should then be administered to a controlled sampling of Kensington residents, not just those who tend to be politically active. Only this way will we have a more scientific evaluation of what the community wants. It's too bad we have spent so much time on this subject with so little input from the large silent majority of this community. I hope this, you will give this matter your further consideration. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, any board members have any comments they'd like to make at this time? Chuck?
Actually, I'd like to thank some people here. Rochelle and Jim were able to wrangle out our WW money to the tune of $158,000. It is, but it's not working. Can you hear me? I was going to thank Rochelle and Jim and their Park Committee. No, close, close, you've got to get close. Anyway, thank you both for your committee work. You got us the $158,000, the Medjedon, Wethy Grant money, it's a great team, Mike. Thanks to Jim for all the work you put into our, Keith and I, it was very, very thoughtful. Thank you very much. So hopefully, at least this building is the one thing that gets repaired, changed, repaired. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have some comments. I went to, I went to the KCC meeting in Len's place because he was not feeling well. And Rochelle, I think you were invited, I don't know if you were not. Okay.
I asked them to invite you, you weren't invited?
No.
We'll fix that next time.
In any case, one of the things that they wanted to discuss, or that they did discuss, was what their contribution would be to any renovation of this building, and they wanted to clarify, and I'm looking at my notes, so I get this right. I don't think, I don't think it's on, so I don't think it matters how close I get. Is it? Oh, okay. Is that better? Okay, all right, all right. So they wanted to clarify that the KCC is willing to contribute to the building, but they are not going to commit until there's any specific amount, until there is an actual plan. They wanted to make sure the board knew that we should not assume that they will make a contribution at any particular level, as that will depend on what the plans look like and what the ultimate cost of the renovations will be. So they asked that I relay that to the board, by this statement. There have also been some questions raised about legal fees by Mr. Garchioni, and I want to say that, in my opinion, the reason the legal fees have gone up is because we spend a lot more time having members of the board, some members of the board, talk to our lawyers about things that are personal, not related to the district, petty, and paranoid. And so our legal costs have increased because of the number of issues that have been raised to our attorneys, some of which should be raised, most of which should not, and the many, many investigations that we've been asked to conduct as a result of these issues that have been raised. So it's not because the board is not following the advice of our lawyers, I don't think they would ever say that. I think it has to do with the use of our lawyers, or the misuse of our lawyers by certain board members. So, that's my response, my personal response, you can take it for what it is. Oh, I also think that we ought to just take a moment to think about what happened in Nice today. For those of you who don't know, there was a truck that purposely ran into a crowd of people, several people were killed, they think it was an act of terror. And so, yet another horrible incident for the people of France.
Yeah, 73 is what I heard last.
Rick, say what you said again, so I can repeat it for the audience. The number has grown to over 70, he said. So we're very, very large numbers, extremely disturbing. It was, I guess it was a bust deal day event for them, so a lot of people were turning out for that. Very disturbing. Anybody else?
Yes.
Comments?
Am I on? Is that, you can hear me? Okay. Good enough? I want to second Chuck's thought in congratulating the Park Building Committee and General Manager Hart, because he did a lot of work on it. And so I want to thank them individually, because they really, Paula Black, Peter Conrad, Gretchen Gilfillan, Katie Gluck, Todd Hodson, Jim Watt, and Ciara Wood. As Chuck said, we're $158,000 closer to the starting line, so. The next Park Buildings meeting will be here, July 27th, at 6:00 p.m. We're going to kind of sneak up against the fire board, because I understand they're having a meeting that evening, so. My committee, yes? 27th, excuse me, yes, it's a Wednesday, and so attendees will be free to go home, or stay on for an extra meeting, bonus meetings, I think. The Public Safety Building Committee should be meeting in August, that date will be coming. And thanks to Sergeant Hull and Sergeant Huey, I'm just the conduit for this thanks. They assisted the Boy Scout Troop 100 with their annual rifle shooting event, which is always generously arranged by Scout Masters, Mike and Deborah Long, but big thanks to the sergeants for agreeing to going along, and Chief Hart for allowing them to do so. Lastly, in regard to investigations, I think that the board authorizes. I'm in conversation with, we were discussing, oh, okay, I'm sorry. There we go, okay. Investigations, conversation with Mr. Riddle about whether or not we're free to release those, whether those were authorized or not, and so.
What's the question?
Well, the question was, Director Gillette made a point about investigations must be authorized by a vote of the board, and so it's a closed-session item, we can't, but I do believe, if my understanding, that we could release the vote on whether investigations occurred or not.
Yeah, if you put that on the agenda, I mean, ultimately, you know, except for personnel actions that would otherwise be protected by law, if you want to disclose an action that occurred in closed session, but you're not otherwise required by law to disclose, that's up to discretion of the board in how you handle that, but I think you'd probably want to agendize that as a separate item.
Of course, yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, just to clarify, I wasn't talking necessarily just about formal investigations, but about emails that are sent constantly to our lawyers asking for them to do something, consider something, or just complaining. They're required to read those and decide whether they have to take any action. That takes time, and you get billed for that time. We can end our dialogue, but we won't, we'll just move forward.
Sure, come on up. Oh, she wanted to say something real quick.
A number of people have spoken about getting an improved or functional audio system, and I know that at the last Finance Committee meeting, you said that it was possible that it might be installed in June. I understand that there are considerations. I'm wondering if somebody could give us some update on what is happening, when we might expect it. It's clear that it really is a hardship for many people to hear, and it also prevents people who are hearing impaired from attending and participating in meetings.
Good point, I'll address that, Ashley. Did you want to make your comment first, Vanessa?
So I'm glad this issue of legal fees came up, because I had an exchange with Randy Riddle about legal fees and who exactly is responsible. And Pat's absolutely right, there's a lot of fees, a lot of fees are incurred by conducting daily business by email. I give a perfect example quite often in that General Manager Hart knows that I give this as an example. I once wrote to General Manager Hart after seeing a piece of language on an agenda, and I wrote to General Manager Hart only, asking him to clarify what this item was, which is a very straightforward question, and as he sets the agenda, it seemed like the reasonable thing to do. Mr. Hart replied and copied to other attorneys. Each of those attorneys replied directly with me, to me, with two different opinions, or interpretations of the language. So I think a lot can be said about refining protocol on the client's side and also on the side of the law firm. I also asked about this audit that we hear was conducted on fees for fiscal year 15-16. This law firm does not attribute fees by director, so you can't pull up Director Cordova's legal fees, or Director Gillette's legal fees, it simply was never categorized that way. So to make an assumption that they, all these fees fall on the shoulders of one director is really not just unfair, but it's rather irresponsible, and I reject that. And I reject that notion, Pat, respectfully. With regard to the stop, I can tell you that the fees were $15,000. I won't tell you what the entire legal bill is, I'll let General Manager handle that for 1516. But I can say, looking at the legal fees for 1516, that the bulk of our fees are incurred in general counsel services. And when I say the bulk, I mean a lot, almost six figures. So I also agree with Director Sheris Watt, that if you're going to suggest that I carry the responsibility of every investigation, there were four other investigations this year that had nothing to do with me. And if those investigations were initiated by the board in closed session, and there's a vote count, then let's see who authorized them and who said, no, let's not do this. So that's all I have on legal fees, it's the only facts that I could gather from the law firm. But this notion that, you know, bills are attributable to each director is just not the case. I asked two days ago, and I had that response in writing.
The fact that they can't trace who made the call doesn't mean that there's not one person that's more, or two people that are more responsible than others. And general counsel fees include general advice. So if someone were to write in and say, can I do this, or can I do that, or is this illegal, or I'm very upset about this, or that was a piece of crap that you just sent out, those kinds of things have to be responded to. They come out of the general counsel.
I did ask, Ashley, for a breakdown of what our legal fees are being generated by. I think we have that, maybe we can agendize a little analysis of that next meeting. We need to do that in order to figure out how to reduce it. It's done by category, not by director. But I think that gives us a fair amount of ability to figure out, you know, what kinds of services are costing the bulk of this bill, and how, what we can do to limit those costs in the future. We certainly have to do something.
It's also interesting, in talking with other law firms, all of the directors heard, because I asked the question, what these other law firms do to control their costs. And I can't say anything about it, apparently. Although I will say, I believe it's a general practice of other law firms in this practice area to, it has been their experience, that there are limitations put on who can contact counsel and when. So that's something that we might want to consider as a way of containing costs.
I have, let's see, two things. We have a Park Grounds Committee meeting set for next Tuesday, right? At 3:00 PM here? One of those rooms? Agenda hopefully will be going out tomorrow, but I'll encourage committee members to send me some agenda items. And on the, Cecilia, you raised the question about the sound system. I have to say, the chief was ready to, ready to get a new sound system. He'd gotten an estimate from a company, he was ready to purchase a good two months ago, at least. And some folks came to him, they volunteered their time, they said, look, we think you're paying too much, and we think you need to do a different kind of analysis. So, and we think you could spend a whole lot less, and even get a better system. So we sort of took them at their word, we've been trying to work with them, but we haven't made as much progress along those lines as we'd like to. And if we can't do that soon, I think I'm going to authorize the chief, just go ahead and purchase what he planned to purchase two months ago and get it done. So I apologize for this taking so long. It is difficult. Apparently our, our sound needs in this room are not that typical. One might think, oh, there's kind of a package you buy for this kind of room, and you just set it up and off you go. But apparently that's not the case. And there's, as you know, there's been fiscal pressure and all that kind of stuff, so we don't want to overspend. And we don't want to spend a whole bunch of money and get something that doesn't work. So we, when people came to us and said, hey, we have a different path, and you need to listen to us, we did want to listen to them. But it's, it is getting way too long, understood. We have to do something.
Can that just be agendized and remain old business until?
Sure. Sure.
Did you set that down?
Absolutely, but I have given monthly reports and everything.
Yeah, he's been, he's been trying.
I haven't discussed that.
No, that's not a criticism, I'm just saying that way we can take action, instead of having to wait to agendize it again. We'll just leave it as an item on old business?
Sure.
Ron, did you want to say something?
My name is Ron Weiselman, I live in Kensington. If Lynn's mic is working, and half the else, and the rest are not, there's got to be some other answer to the problem of the sound.
Well, there's, see, the thing is, I get really close to it, a lot of people have a hard time doing that.
No, no, your mic is significantly better than everybody else's.
Well, it didn't work for him, I just tried to give him mine, it didn't work at all for him. I can take his and get the same sound out of it.
Testing.
Check for radiation.
Testing.
You know, these, these are difficult mics to use, and that's part of the problem.
Chuck's an alto.
Let's, let's move on. We're done with comments, right? Anymore? Okay.
Staff comments?
Staff comments, yes, please.
Mr. President, Board of Directors, I just have a couple, just real quick comments. SF Gate on July 5th printed an article for the safest communities in the state of California, as well as nationwide. And if you did not see the article, Kensington, any guesses what Kensington would be? We're number seven in the state, and 778 in the nation. And where that number comes from is, we are monthly are required to submit to the Department of Justice our crime statistics, and they take it directly off of their website and so forth. So that, I think that's really something that we ought to be proud of, and represent to the community. And then the next item, we're just real quick, is that I would like to try to set a special meeting for sometime either late July, or potentially early August, if we have to, before the next meeting, ideally. That is for the board to respond to a grievance that the POA has submitted to me, in my capacity as the Chief of Police, in my capacity of the General Manager, I've denied that grievance, and forwarded it to the Board of Directors. Specifically, the grievance is relative to my policy, my directive for changing out and standardizing the weapon policy. They have, they'd like to appeal my decision relative to that. So they've asked that a meeting be held to the board, of course, that is a public meeting. So I'd like to try to schedule something soon, rather than later, for that. Also, I would like to tentatively set another Finance Committee meeting, tentatively, for those that are on the, in the, in the room, August 9th, if that's available for a Finance Committee meeting. Primarily, that'll be two items on there. Rob Furman has a report of a different style of budgeting and projections.
Yeah, and he has to go first, this time.
Yes. And as I said, the second item is to, for the Finance Committee to review the potential proposal for a new actuarial study to be conducted.
So were we able to confirm the room, or are we still waiting on that?
We're still, we're still working on that, but the Boy Scouts don't, don't do it in the summer, so Tuesday should be available on that night, if that fits for anyone's schedule. If it does not, please let me know by email. For those that are in the room, the Finance Committee, I'll try to find another date and so forth. So I believe that completes staff reports.
I, I've noticed the last few meetings have not been recorded with a camera or a tape recorder. Is it?
You in the Finance meeting?
Yes, ma'am, sir. Yes, Lynn. Is it possible to at least have an audio recording of that meeting? Because they're very helpful, and I can't always make the Finance Committee meetings, but I like to hear the feedback from the community, and the discourse among the committee members.
Sure, you bet.
Thank you.
Yeah, my, my suggestion would be is that at least audio tape all the meetings.
That's fine. Just, just something.
Sure, absolutely. And as a, as a update to President Welsh's presentation, a reference to the, to the sound system and the, and the audio system, I do have a meeting with probably the seventh contractor tomorrow at 3:00 here. Please, if you have nothing better to do, and want to join me, I would welcome anyone to come by here at 3:00 tomorrow. It'll be someone that will, that was referred to by Myers, which was another issue I had to track down, because there was a recommendation to pursue Myers, a sound company in Berkeley, they don't do what we need done. So they referred us to another company, and the other company is meeting here, meeting me here tomorrow at 3:00. I welcome the public to come by, to make sure that you know that I'm working on this project, and as Mr. Welsh indicated, I'm ready to pull the trigger, but I want to make sure we do it judiciously, all right? Because it's a lot of money for this community, and I want to get it right.
General Manager, I took the walk through with Sergeant Huey.
Yes, she did.
May I come again tomorrow at 3:00?
I'm sorry?
Can I come again tomorrow at 3:00?
Sure, absolutely.
And if that changes, would you just post it someplace, just in case?
I'm sorry.
If the time changes tomorrow, could you post it on the website, or let us know?
No, it won't change.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it won't change, it'll be 3:00.
I don't think I've ever commented during this period, but this is my last meeting. So I just wanted to thank the board collectively and individually for having us represent you over the last year and change. And also just wanted to say goodbye and thank you to the community, who've been, without exception, always very kind and understanding. So that's it, thank you.
And those staff reports.
All right, thank you. So Chief, I understand you wanted to move one agenda item up, because we have somebody making a short.
Yes.
Bringing the sign here for us to look at.
Right, to be cognizant of someone's time, I'd like to ask the board to go to, move to 7B.
7B, old business, yeah. Okay, so let's do that right now.
So 7, so 7B talks about the zero tolerance, which has been an issue in the community for a number of years. In fact, since it was initially adopted by the Board of Directors. I was asked to kind of look at it by other members of the community, and review it. And essentially, it is a great foundation in review of traffic and collision study reports within the community. Everyone knows that Kensington's kind of a more of a unique community, more so than other communities, relative to at least our speed and our traffic flow. But we do have a lot of similarities, and obviously we still have pedestrian concerns, traffic safety concerns, speeding concerns, violations of the vehicle code. So in my review, you know, the traffic study in and of itself is, is good, it's a great foundation, but there's, there's part of that that was specifically approved by the board in 2010, and that was at least the terminology of zero tolerance. And as we've known, and has been indicated by members of the community, there's not necessarily been zero tolerance, but there's also a misperception of what that report specifically says about zero tolerance. The zero tolerance specifically was only for the traffic area, traffic signal light around the library. It was not the entire community. A lot of people do believe, though, that it was misrepresented, or at least wasn't marketed that way. So I wanted to clarify that. I also don't like the negative connotation. To me personally, and my recommendation is that we eliminate the word zero tolerance. Having said that, I also recognize that we do have traffic needs, and traffic concerns in this community. So I want, I'd like to change that terminology to maximum enforcement. With that, that will come with my recommendations, that I've been trying to prepare for a long time, and have talked to a lot of people in the community, met in the community, met people that come by the office, which I really truly enjoy, and a lot of people have taken me up on that. So I've recommended a lot of different specific changes, and they're on page 82 if you have a copy of the agenda, or monitoring it. And my first one, obviously, is to replace and expand the zero tolerance policy to maximum enforcement. That actually fits to what CHP uses, and that, believe it or not, may help us down the road for potential grants from the Traffic Safety Commission of the state, by aligning our traffic safety concerns with maximum enforcement. So that's the first one that we have. The second one is that I'm recommending that we purchase some, some signs, of which is in the staff report, as well as on the backboard, some traffic safety signs that will be posted at specific locations throughout the entry points into Kensington. I think we need to move to a point where we take traffic safety very, very seriously, not only in the, from the law enforcement perspective, but also from the community that drives within Kensington. I think the statistics, if we were to do a statistical report, if we could find this out. We have a lot of transients that drive through. I'm only using transient as a terminology to describe someone that maybe lives in El Cerrito that drives to Berkeley, but drives through Kensington. So that transit driver, all right, may or may not necessarily be the one, be careful or mindful of children play, or pedestrian safety, or bicycle safety. And as everyone knows, we have a lot of bicycles that go throughout the community. So we have to take an assertive effort. I think that we have had a lot of public comment, I, directly towards the police department. We are working on traffic enforcement as much as we possibly can with staffing. And I think the staff report will, does show a significant increase in, in traffic stops, as well as traffic citations. But I think it's something we need to consider. Those probably run, if you get them reflectorized, will probably run anywhere from $100, $150 apiece for those. And we can purchase probably anywhere from half a dozen to 10, maybe six to 10, and post them throughout the entry points into Kensington. We have actually about 12 different entry points that one can get into, drive into Kensington in and of itself. So if, right, and Trish, if you can actually, all right, thank you, if you want to look, can you go pick that up, actually, Art? Either one, for those that may not necessarily be seeing it. It is also in the, Art, if you can move over closer to the podium, so people in the audience and the TV can see. So that's something that, the verbiage could change, we kind of played around with it within, within the Public Safety Building, but it's something that if you come into Kensington, you'll see that sign, and you'll know that we take things seriously. There was also, someone sent me a notice on Nextdoor that talked about, the only thing that Kensington officers do is hopefully pull over and write tickets, which I thought was kind of interesting, in light of some of the comments that we've received over the months. So that's, that's item number, number two in the staff report. I have number three, and while Art is still standing, the budget, in the budget, it does call for two portable signs, and I'd like to introduce Art Lake of Lake Traffic Solutions. And Art is going to plug in the traffic sign that I think that everyone is probably familiar with. We have one that is on Arlington already, on the upper end of Arlington. And this would be a sign that we could purchase, tentatively two of them, and we buy probably a half a dozen poles. And the poles would be mounted in different locations throughout the community, and then we can move the signage. Art, it's not, I don't think it's on anymore. Oh, cycle through. So we, so we purchased the poles, which are fairly inexpensive, and then we moved the sign around. And my, my theory behind this aspect of it is, is that you drive by a sign five days a week, or 10, you know, 10 times a month, you eventually get complacent of that sign. So by moving the signs throughout the community, all right, that brings community awareness, it brings public safety, all right, it makes people think about what your speed is. And everyone knows our speed is maximum 25, but some people, as that transient community drives through Kensington, they may not realize that, or may not know that, or they may not even be thinking about that. So that's an idea, we don't have to spend the money, you allocated it for it, and I indicated in the budget, in my presentation of the budget, that we'd only spend it if you guys authorized the concept of purchasing those and moving those signs around, and the police department would be taking care of that. So, and Art, Art Lake is here, Neil, after our presentation, you can answer any questions about the signs themselves. Art, if you can, open it up and show them the batteries. It's, it's actually portable, it's very easy, knob, twist to turn off the sign, or take off the sign, you unplug it. Right now, there's only one battery in it, it actually comes with two, so we'd be charging them up, I would imagine we could charge them up. I think you told me they're good for, how many hours, Art?
One battery will operate the sign plus or minus a week.
Okay. So we can change them out every four, five, six days, change the batteries, we at least have one throughout, in different locations, all right? And that could also be a significant deterrent, but it'd also be a reminder, when you see the red and blue lights behind you, that you should have slowed down based on this traffic sign. So, thank you, Art. I'll call you back up at the end, see if anyone has any questions. Number four is, is the purchase of one motorcycle. As everyone knows, through my staff reports, we had two motorcycles. I don't think that two motorcycles was necessary, based on Kensington. In addition to that, both of the motorcycles were in pretty bad shape. In addition to that, both of the motorcycles were in pretty bad shape, and were collectively, were to cost about $5,000 just to bring them up to a certain standard of safe driving for the officers, so I scrapped both of those. And we've sold one of them, the Harley's already been sold for about $5,000, BMW could be, could be about the same, maybe a little more, a little bit less, all right, those costs would be used to offset a new motorcycle that obviously would be equipped with radar. And the purpose for, for a motorcycle is, is that the difficulty is trying to find a place, quite frankly, let's say on Arlington or Franciscan, that patrol car just can't get into, and because of the tight streets and locations, we need, we need a place to run radar, and, and that's only for people, all right, that are not obeying, you know, obeying the speed limit signs. And we need something that can be enforceable as well as be the standards of traffic safety laws, as well as a vehicle that can maneuver when necessary. So that's my fourth recommendation. And the last, and the fifth recommendation I have is anywhere from use of additional overtime if necessary, and that's performing selective enforcement. Selective enforcement will be on certain days, and I have no problem with advertising this in any form, either on the website or through our local media, and that is that will be specific violations, such as if you were to sit in the, I'll just use the example of the Chevron parking lot, at any given time, you can count the number of drivers that either one, don't stop at that stop sign, all right, number one. Number two, you can also count the number of drivers that are on their cell phones at any given time, and that is a very hefty ticket to receive, and it is also, but primarily it's about traffic awareness, traffic safety, as well as, you know, pedestrian safety. A lot of people that cross that crosswalk right then and there to go back to the, to the coffee shop or to the sandwich shop, go back get the gas, go back and forth, pedestrians, joggers, and I think it's a, that's just one location. Calusa is another area that is pretty significant, that we need to specifically mark, you know, for traffic safety enforcement. And I think what we can do is, is, there's a lot of the things, without giving up too much of police tactics, I believe in making sure that people are warned in advance, but also giving opportunity to have full notice that we will enforce certain violations on certain days. That doesn't prevent the officer or any, any of the officers from forcing any of the traffic safety laws, but as we, as I get my staff up to full staff, I have the ability to traffic, to enforce the traffic safety laws within the community. I think is what's been publicly noticed already is that we have one individual that has come back, when he comes back, he's on midnight for a couple, a couple weeks, but when he comes back, he primarily will be working traffic enforcement. And he is kind of a no-nonsense, kind of maximum enforcement kind of guy, and I just want to try to make sure that we enforce the traffic safety effectively throughout the One of the other, one of the other tactics that I think that we want to, I want to try to work on that personally drives me crazy as a police officer, and that is when off, when drivers will enter a crosswalk when a pedestrian is in the crosswalk. You can't do that, that's a violation of the vehicle code. So I want to have some guest violators essentially that would walk in the pedestrian, all right, and be monitoring that to see if the vehicle will stop. We can do that at all different locations in the, throughout the community. So, and the last is the sign that's posted on there. There is much more that can, can be done about traffic safety. Those particular signs will keep data if we buy the upgraded version. That particular one, I think, is just the speed, but we could also buy the upgraded version, which I think is about a...
You can get the number, you can get the data.
Okay, that one. So, so we can buy the upgraded one that has the data for purposes of the number of speeds, the vehicles, the speed limit, to see how many vehicles are actually violating the speed laws and so forth. The one on Arlington does have that, it is a little bit older technology, and it's difficult to extract, and then it does overwrite itself as well, so I'm having a problem, a little bit difficult to get in that in the right time, the right form to produce for the, for the community. So that essentially concludes my staff report. Art is available for questions, and I'm certainly available for questions as well.
Board members? Chuck? I'm sorry.
I hit the button first. Two questions here. What's to stop anybody from stealing the sign up there, once you put it out there, if you can just take it off of the knob? And secondly, your plan on mass, on maximum enforcement is... Your plan on maximum enforcement is fine, I don't want to buy a motorcycle at this time, I really want to start saving as much of our bucks as we can to put into this building, and... What? Did you guys get that on film? Thank you. The point is, I really want to funnel as much of our surplus funds into this building and also what we're going to do about when the fire station closes down, because those are looming large. If later on we have the financial health to get a motorcycle, that's fine, now we don't. I really have some other priorities I want to spend the money on. So those are the two, one's a point, one's a question about the sign.
So I can, I can answer as Art gets up there if you'd like. They do have locks on there that we can, that secure it, and that's one of the issues, the reason that I'm going to this recommendation is that the sign, trailer sign that the county uses, what you'll notice is they, they bring it out on a trailer, they, they set it up, and then they take it away before the end of the day. And when asked about what they do, and I think that we, Mr. Kateris can probably validate this, and that is because they're afraid that it'd be stolen, the trailer itself. Now, we could buy trailers, they have trailers available as well, this tends to be a little bit cheaper. I'm of the mindset that with the lock on there, all right, and Art can probably validate this, that it's going to be pretty hard to try to steal without wrecking the sign. But Art, you want to stick up to the microphone for me if you can, and answer it right there, podium?
Art, I saw your last thing.
This is Art Lake with Lake Traffic Solutions. These signs have heavy-duty police locks on them, so you have to open the actual unit to get to, oh, to get to the locks. Ted?
I can't see it, but this is standard sign ribbons holding the bracket onto the post.
Do you happen to know, do you happen to know from your customers what the rate of vandalism has been on these?
It's been very little. The only vandalism I know of on my signs has been in Stockton on a couple areas where, you know, it's like combat zone, and, and that was simply where somebody beat the screen and the flex sand had to be replaced.
Okay. I, oh, go ahead. Okay, shall I just go in order of your points here?
Whatever you'd like.
Okay, well, let me tell you what I like about what you proposed here. You note here that a warning, a traffic warning, could also be an effective tool in compliance.
Yes.
And I, I like the idea of that, and I think that's where you're going with this sort of stunted infraction, you know, in the crosswalk. We're not going to ticket anyone, we're going to use that as an opportunity to inform, is that right? We're not entrapping anyone, is what I'm asking?
No. Entrapping's against law, I can't entrap anybody, all right, but entrapment would be is that I force you to do something, all right? If you run through a, a crosswalk when there is someone in there, that's not entrapping. But the, the fact that I would be putting the person in there...
Yes.
Causing the vehicle to, to stop, that's not entrapping.
I'm sorry, so would your, the, the outcome of, of this exercise would be to ticket people first or to warn them first, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Well, I mean, it's, at the end of the day, it's about changing behavior and trying to enforce traffic safety, and I would imagine it would be based on the egregiousness of it. In other words, if, if they come in close, they don't even recognize the, the person from walking in the crosswalk where a serious accident could have occurred, that individual probably received a citation, all right? If it's something that, that person is 25, you know, feet away, and then goes through the, the crosswalk, they probably will get a warning if they're, if they're stopped. You know, it's a very precarious position to, to be in that, and we've got to monitor closely.
Sure. So the reason I ask is that when I look at the Watch Commander monthly report, there is such a disparity, I have one officer writing one citation, another officer writing 15. I have one officer writing five parking citations, another 27. I have one traffic stop with 153 for the other officer for the same time period. So I, I guess, when I hear maximum enforcement, it doesn't give me a warm and fuzzy feeling about community policing, and I understand that we need maximum enforcement, I know it's not your language, it's the CHP's, but I, I, I just have some issue with it, and I'm sure it's optional and you are willing to work on it, but it does...
Well, I think the report also says, Director, about discretion, and I think that there are very few items in law enforcement where the police have no discretion, all right, very few. Most of the time, 99% of the time, police officer has discretion. That being said, I think that need, we need to have discretion, but I also want to make it a policy, all right, that we enforce traffic laws within the community, all right?
And I don't...
And emphasize that back.
Right, and I don't disagree with that, but I think if we're going from, you know, a police report that has one traffic citation in one month, and then the next month we're up to 73, I think we owe it to the community to push this out, and I see that in your plan, that you're going to create some awareness that this is a full-court press on traffic.
Right.
It's just a comment. Can I go to item three here?
Please do.
Which has to do with the equipment?
Sure.
How many of these signs would be in the community at any time?
Well, if you count the one on Arlington and the, and the two that you have purchased, all right, in theory, you could say three total.
Okay, and would you be working with the homeowners before installing them, because I know that light does impact some darker parts of the...
Right, we'd, we'd absolutely have to work with the homeowners.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I'm not going to put anything in cement initially on the pole, but we're also going to be very careful so that it doesn't get vandalized or doesn't get, get stolen. But there's also only key, there's limited key areas in the community of where these are absolutely would be of value for, to get the biggest bang for the buck.
Okay.
Like Franciscan is an example that everybody knows about, all right? I think, you know, I'd love to put two on those, one on each side.
Berkeley Park is one I can think of, I almost got creamed there today.
Absolutely, absolutely. Calusa, obviously, is, is an area that needs to be, is concerned about as well.
And then item number three, this could be a question for Mr. Lake, do these come solar-powered or are they just all battery-operated?
You need to step up to the mic.
Director, this particular model is only battery-operated, but we have two other models that are solar-powered.
And the...
Or AC-powered.
Oh, gotcha. And the pole, can that come in green, or is that always black? You don't handle the poles.
This happens to be, I mean, we can get them in black or...
Yeah, okay.
Various colors, but, but typically they're, typically they're galvanized, but...
Okay, because if that sign's not on it, then we just have a silver pole in front of someone's home, and I'm just asking, so...
Right.
Okay.
While we're on the topic, how much, what's the price difference between the solar panel, solar-powered ones and the battery-operated ones?
It's about, about $800.
The difference is $800 or the cost?
Eight hundred difference.
Okay.
May I ask what the cost for a battery is?
The battery presently is about $300, but I fully expect that that price will be coming down over time.
Okay, and we would go through one a week?
No, 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 the batteries are rechargeable.
They're rechargeable.
They come, they come with a recharge.
What's the lifetime of a battery, roughly?
In minimum of three years, and we expected it probably to be longer.
Is there like a three-year guarantee, or how does that work? Okay.
So the reason I didn't initially recommend the solar panel ones is because we're going to be moving it, you know, monthly, and I'm afraid of getting wrecked or damaged and so forth. And these are batteries, so we'll have to charge the batteries up at the station, so they'll be kind of always in transit or posted.
Okay. Item four, you and I discussed this maybe last week or this week, I was at the farmer's market...
Yes.
And one of the officers was at the stop sign at Calusa Circle going south, and I crossed the street, and he decided to get out of his vehicle and to stand at the stop sign to see who would be rolling through. I had mentioned to him I go there every day to send my Freddy's, and I actually can't really know when stops sometimes, it's not even a, they just shoot right through. So I'm with Chuck about seeing if we can stave off the purchase of a motorcycle, but I know being on foot, this officer felt really shook things up for some drivers, seeing an officer right there standing at their eye level, not in a car. And I also asked you about mountain bikes, having an officer on a mountain bike sort of parked at the Arlington where it's flatter and he can make it to the station. Have you considered that?
Not as of yet. We were gonna, I was going to get through this first and then evaluate that. The difficulty with mountain bikes, and one of the reasons why they probably haven't been done too much in the past is because we'll have limited abilities, all right, based on our G rank, G graphical location.
Items...
It's not off the table.
Okay, we could all use the exercise, including myself. Item five, section A, could you please add Ardmore to that list of hotspots that would be coming south on Arlington, making a right where the architect is?
Sure.
That curve, it's been on the complaint list of several of those neighbors, and it keeps getting, it falls off, and I just want to make sure you keep Ardmore there.
You bet.
The stop sign on Calusa, you talk about sort of shaking things up a little bit, and I think that's a great strategy with regard to a mobile sign. The stop sign at Calusa, I noticed this morning, is really low, it's just above the newspaper kiosk. Could you just ensure that all of our signage is at the optimal eye level for drivers?
Sure.
Because I, I sort of looked at it, and I thought, you know, if you're not looking, you could almost miss it, and I want to be fair.
Right, I can do that, and as you know, the county takes care of that, but I can make a phone call.
Yes, I do know that, and that's, those are my hard questions for now, I'm just going to absorb the rest as we go along. Thank you.
I think most...
My question was, most of your cert? Was it your understanding that when you're in, that it was only this intersection?
Actually, I voted for it for the community because I really thought it was important that people obey the law, so my intent in voting for zero tolerance was to make it a community-wide effort. Now, the minutes may not reflect that, but that's sure what I was voting for when I voted. It's, I, I really am a stickler on traffic safety, I just think it's imperative that we provide safe streets for all of our kids. I saw some four-year-olds today paddling along the sidewalk, and I'd be terrified as a parent having cars go roaring by through a stop sign because they were careless and whack some poor kid. In the interest of full disclosure, when I was 12 years old, I got hit by a car crossing a sidewalk, so I am really a stickler on this, and I just think it's the most important thing we can do for our community.
Okay, thank you, that was my understanding as well, that was community-wide, and I'm a huge fan of the poles and the signs, so you know, and I know a mountain bike officer out of Sacramento, so I know that that takes a lot of work, and we have to have a physical program, and they have to be accredited, so I understand that that would take quite a, quite a time.
It's not, it's not just putting an officer on a bike, they have, they have to be trained.
Yeah, absolutely, so I, I understand that that would...
And fit.
Yes, and I am in agreement with Chuck and Vanessa that the only thing I'm really hesitant on is number four.
So just for, for clarity on that, had I known that, I probably would have gotten rid of it, I would have spent the money to, to get one, because you really will tie my hands of not having the mobility that a motorcycle does, and, you know, it's, it's the board's decision, I'm just telling you, you tie my hands by not having all the resources available in a motorcycle that can provide for traffic enforcement, traffic safety.
Can I ask what, if you were going to buy one, you'd buy one brand-new, not used?
I could look, I could look used, I anticipate probably getting $10,000 probably between the two bikes, the old bikes, so we're probably talking less than $15,000 for either a used or new bike. A new one would, would last years.
How much would a new one cost? How much would a new one cost?
$20,000, and we already have the equipment, so we're probably, probably talking about $10,000.
So, that's not a tremendous amount of money.
Now, maybe I'm mistaken, and if you don't want to share, but my understanding was that one of our officers, only one of our officers was trained.
No, we have two.
Oh, okay.
We have two that are motorcycle-trained.
Okay. That that officer was moving to a new position and therefore might not be available for...
He is, he is now a detective, but I also told him that for purposes of traffic safety, I'd like him out there on a bike, all right, at least once or twice a month, and interchanging on the days when the other traffic officer is not on.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, when it comes to, it's about deterrence, and it's about changing people's driving habits. You know, we've all driven for years, and I think that it gets a point of complacency, but specifically, it's just my opinion.
So, I actually agree with you on the maximum enforcement. I think...
I actually agree on the maximum enforcement idea. I think, I like the term, actually. And I do believe that officers have to have some discretion, so I think that's a good thing. I cannot support a motorcycle. The one argument I heard you make before, but I didn't hear you make it this time, is that in an earthquake, a motorcycle might be able to get to places that a car would not be able to get to.
Absolutely.
That is really the only thing that would be a compelling argument for me, but at this time, I just don't think we have the luxury of being able to afford a motorcycle, and especially if we only have one or two officers who can use it. So, I cannot support the motorcycle. I'm a little bit curious about the setup, having people in crosswalks purposely walking in front of cars. I just, that just doesn't seem right to me. I got a ticket for driving through a crosswalk when someone was on the other side in Berkeley. So, I didn't even know that was illegal, but apparently I know now that it is illegal. But the setting it up, to me, just doesn't seem consistent with Kensington or with what we need to do. So, that's where I come out on this.
Well, I don't, in some cases that I, when I've sat in different locations myself, I don't need to do a setup.
Right.
We just, we just need to be issuing citations.
Yeah. I'd rather see you do it that way. And I too have sat at that gas station and watched people run through that stop sign. So, that's a comment.
I think if we're committed to community policing, a shtick doesn't really feel that way. It feels just not nice.
I would only tell, I'm sorry, I would tell people, don't violate the vehicle code.
As a police chief you would. As a general manager, I'd hope that you'd recognize that community policing...
Of course, of course I do, as both chief of police and general manager. But it's about changing behavior. It's about, you know, making sure that we have safe streets. We have a very unique community that everybody's aware of, much more than I am. All right? We've got bicycles that are running down the street that are going sometimes faster than the cars are going. We've got kids that are going to schools and crossing locks. You know, we've got, you know, areas that people are going too fast. We've got one-way streets. It's a very unique area, and it's a very unique area to police, all right, when it comes to long distances. We only have limited streets that we run radar on because they have to be engineered, all right, in order to do that. So, I'm not going to tell you which streets that we can run radar on. But, you know, it's a very unique area that we need to make sure we concentrate on.
Go ahead, Lynn, and I'll just one last thing.
Well, I just, I like overall what you're doing here with this. I prefer, actually, the phrase maximum compliance myself. And I spent most of my career in a regulatory agency that dealt with compliance and enforcement and what the difference is. And, you know, enforcement is when you whack somebody, and you assume that when you whack them, they're going to be better next time. Compliance is when they actually comply with the law. And there are lots of things that can be done to bring about compliance. Enforcement is one of them, and it's a big part of it. But like these signs are another big part, you know, just sort of, hey, you're driving. Look at your speed, you know? And that speaks to a lot of people. So, I, I like the sort of, you're moving toward a holistic approach here, and I like that. I think I would like to see, you know, I think I agree with Pat. I think that, you know, setting people up to get ticketed for blowing a crosswalk may not be the best thing to start...
Let me be clear, we don't set anybody.
Well, you call it what you want, okay? It's something that's going to raise concerns on the part of a number of people. And what I guess I'm going to suggest is, you're fixing a lot of things at once here. There's been total confusion in the community about what we're doing in the world of compliance and enforcement. So, you're making a wonderful effort to fix that and make it coherent, which is desperately needed, I think. You're getting more police presence. We're starting to write more tickets. That's a great thing also. We're coming out of that period we're in where so many people are out. So, I would sort of like to see us, you know, move forward with the more traditional stuff, get it working well. Some, this actually isn't even new anymore, this sign. I mean, they've been around for a long time, and I think those kinds of tools are great, and we should emphasize more of them. But let's not, let's not do too much too fast. Why don't we just get the enforcement in place, and with the ideas that might be controversial, we might need to talk some of them through. That would be my sense of it.
The only thing I wanted to, you and I have debated what we could call this. I like maximum compliance. I think that's a nice flip on it. I offer traffic safety as no accident, please slow down, but maybe that's too soft. But I do have a problem with the aesthetics of this sign. I think I don't want to see the community littered with signage unless it's really nice signage. And we're all still smacking from the sign change at the Arlington gateway. And I just, I don't want any controversy. If there's a community member who's a graphic artist, there are plenty of them who wants, you know, maybe we do a contest or something, but I just, let's just see if we can hire someone to just refine this in a way that's a little more aesthetically...
Director, traffic warning signs have specific requirements that are outlined in the vehicle code. So, traffic signs can't necessarily be pretty, all right? They need to be notified or noticeable.
Those logos don't look like a traditional...
I honestly do not need to give you this level of detail.
So, how do, what do we want to do with this proposal? We want to move it forward now? We want another discussion next meeting? What do you guys want to do? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, of course. Please step up.
Linda Lipscomb. I don't, I don't agree with this level of micromanagement of the general manager, number one. Secondly, Chief, calling it maximum enforcement, is that a term of art for qualifying for additional funding? Would our chances of obtaining additional state or other kind of law enforcement funding grants be diminished by calling it compliance as opposed to enforcement?
Well, the reason I picked traffic enforcement, or maximum enforcement, is because it aligns with CHP's Traffic Safety Council, and they have the same terminology. So, ideally, one of the things that I'm, hopefully, be moving towards is that the conceptually agreed with these signs, all right, is apply for a traffic safety grant using the same terminology, all right, using the same kind of company. We put a couple more, all right, so we'll always have them 24/7 out and about, and more than just three ideally, because we have a lot of it in different areas. So, I picked traffic, maximum enforcement because of that. Enforcement, well...
And you don't think our opportunities would be diminished by using the word compliance?
There is the possibility that it could be, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Simon Rothman. I have a simple question, I think. My understanding is there's a significant delta between the number of tickets that are issued and what happens if people, when they go down the hill. My understanding is, I've heard this numerous times, that there's reluctance for the police to follow through on that and to go down the hill. That's the expression that I hear used. You know, I'm sorry, am I not close enough? They challenge it, and the police don't go down the hill to defend the ticket. So, to me, the issue is not the number of tickets that are issued, but our effectiveness on the people being penalized for breaking the law. So, giving more tickets looks nice, but will we actually get more compliance if people challenge the tickets?
Well, one of the, one of the issues and concerns that I have with Kensington is the staffing levels, all right, of law enforcement. The difficulty is, is that if you write a citation, all right, and you go to court, but then you're on duty when that court period happens. You can't leave the district, all right? Can't leave the district understaffed. So, unfortunately, we try to postpone some of the citations, but there's far too many times that I have seen since I've been here where the officer is the only officer on duty, all right, and the difficulty getting to Richmond or Martinez is problematic. That's when I don the uniform. That's when, you know, I've got the, maybe the detective covering, but I do everything I possibly can to make sure that individual goes to court.
And so, that's really where the issue lies that I'm trying to address, is handing out more tickets is not a guarantee of anything, right?
Right.
Unless we can put the infrastructure in place to manage that better, I'm not sure it's worth the effort.
Well, but I'll also say that I have one member of the community that is very adamant about, and has mentioned this a number of times, and just write the tickets and don't worry about going to court, which I will not do. Not to mention, I don't believe it's legal.
Do we have stats on how many tickets get appealed?
No.
It might be nice to know that. I mean, I, you know, there's going to be a cer, every, every police district loses some tickets because there's a conflict for the officer. That's a common, you know, reason why people appeal. But if we're talking 5%, 10% appeal, and that's not likely to change if we write more tickets, then we're still doing something significant. And I think, you know, it'd be nice to have, to develop some sort of data along those lines.
Okay. My name, my name is Anthony Knight, and I have a question for the chief. As I'm listening to this discussion, particularly with respect to crossings, I'm realizing that I may not have a clear understanding of the law, and I thought it would be good to bring it up publicly. If you have a divided roadway, such as we have in front of the service station there, where it's my recollection that a pedestrian could leave the sidewalk and get to the island and then make another jump over to the other side of the street, is a driver required actually to wait until he's crossed the far side of the road?
That is what I got kicked in the door.
That is why I raised the question. To me, to me, I don't think people understand, am I right? Is this correct?
Technically, yes. However, most officers will not issue a citation to a driver, all right, unless that pedestrian has to break stride. In other words, if they were to, walking across the street, they hit the island, and someone's coming up going south, all right, and has to stop for that car because the car is moving forward, then more, that individual's going to get a ticket, all right, without question. Technically, when you enter that crosswalk, on a technical basis, based on the vehicle code, they're in violation of the law if they cross the plane of the crosswalk.
Okay. But what's under discussion this evening is zero tolerance. So, I guess I have to ask you, I mean, is this a case of forgiveness in Kensington? Because it did sound like it was mean-spirited in Berkeley.
And I didn't even contest it. I took the ticket and paid it.
You know, it, you, you guys are kind of getting hung up a little bit on, you know, the specifics of what I had talked about.
Okay. I withdraw.
In general, in general, I want to talk about pedestrian safety, all right? And part of pedestrian safety is being able to walk across the street, on Arlington, across Arlington, all right, safely, and not have to be impeded by the traffic, all right? Because you're a pedestrian. It's just one element. I want to go down to Calusa, all right, and cover the stop signs down at Calusa. So, there's a variety of different areas. There's the speed, obviously, going around the turn, the S-turn, you know, on Arlington. So, there's a lot of different areas, not just one specific area. I use those as examples to try to justify and explain what my concept was.
Okay. Thank you very much. I did, I hope I didn't put you on the spot too.
No, no, no.
He has said all along that he believes officers should have discretion, so I think that's kind of a signal there.
Right.
Andrew Gutierrez. I've been cited as being critical of the police, but tonight, I'm pleased with some of the discussion that I hear. It's the first time in 20 years that open discussion of these issues has occurred in this forum. However, we have about 10,000 transients heading south on the Arlington, and I know this from getting the county records and perusing them and seeing what that's about. When you look at their records, what they've obviously done is recorded the final speeding as they go past the, or just as they go past the sign. What they should be recording is the speed when they're first noticed by the sign. That would mean that just about 70% of those people are going way over the speed limit. I am also the adamant one cited by Mr. Hart, who insists that why don't they give tickets? And they don't have to show up to defend them. I mean, it's silly. You have to go all the way to Martinez. If that's the case, it would be better to give the tickets as part of El Cerrito, and then they would only have to go to El Cerrito, not spend half a day going to Martinez. The person who got the ticket has to show up to Martinez if they want to prevail. We don't have to. You get very little money for those tickets anyway. What, about $10 per ticket? So, the question is, why won't you issue those tickets? I'll take that answer afterwards. The second thing is, in many places, they have devices which also photograph license plates. In Kensington, they should photograph the rear license plate because many of the cars don't have license plates in front. And then, issue those citations on that basis. Now, why can't that be done? So, speeding is rampant, and anybody who has a smartphone, and that's most people, they click and they say, how do I get from El Sobranti to Walnut Creek in the easiest way? Kensington turns out to be a very convenient way, and so on for just about everybody around us. We're sort of like the Belgium of Europe. Everybody has to go through us. So, for us to be polite and not issue tickets, and be polite and show up at Martinez to defend them, just seems silly to me.
John Gocciuni. Couple of items, just suggestions. The motorcycle, rather than, I know your fixation is on traffic and safety, but if we take safety in a bigger realm, I'm involved in CERT, which is trying to get everybody prepared for that fire or earthquake. I can't believe that a motorcycle with all the equipment on it that you may purchase is going to be able to navigate any of our paths or hills when that fire or earthquake comes. So, I just can't see that money spent for that. I might be even actually agreeing with Lynn on this, that that might not be money well-spent. Not to mention the noise. Last time, we had some motorcycles. They're pretty loud going up the hill, and at night, I'm sure you're going to get some complaints if that's, if that's running around. Next item, suggestions again, the signage. That's my particular expertise. I work in that constantly. I'm a designer, doing a lot of work at San Francisco International Airport. I won't bore you with that. That particular sign just has too much information. When you do something like that, you have to get it as fewer words as possible if you're really intent on people reading it, taking in the information, and then thinking about it. The best example is the sign that says, Share the Road. It's simple. There's few words. You get the message. You can take it in, and you can react. For instance, for that, that particular sign there, to be effective, the cap height has to be something like three, three inches high, and that sign becomes a billboard. It's too much to read. So, that's just my suggestions.
Mabry Benson here. I guess I'm going to be contrary. I really do think the motorcycles are very useful in Kensington because, I just, check your heart, Chuck. We have narrow, crazy streets. I mean, I'd like to see more enforcement on Franciscan, and there is no way a car can turn around on there. I would like to suggest that one of your hotspots for your signs be on the Arlington going south, just north of Sunset, which is steep, and they just really get their speed going up.
Right.
And I have seen some of these signs where when you're going over the speed limit, they turn red and flash red at you. That really catches your eye. I don't know how much more it costs, but I wouldn't think that much more these days. And somebody brought up a point, yes, you would spend an hour trying to read that sign and be, but be past it, you'd have to go past it 50 times before you took in the entire message.
Jim Watt. Well, Mayberry touched on a couple of things that I agree with. Yes, there's a sign that when you come off the freeway on what it becomes Marin, it flashes the, the speed, and then it, and it shoots out a slowdown, and I guarantee you, that gets my attention every time in red. So if there's some way to do what Mayberry's talking about, when you go above, let's say, 35, it switches over to a slowdown or something, I think that would be fantastic. I think the signs are a great idea. I do, however, have some issues with putting up signs on all the entry points to Kensington similar to this. And it's not just the, the content and the way it's displayed there. I just think that gives us kind of a, a, the wrong impression as being a community where hopefully we're looking after one another and we're, we're trying to help one another out. It looks, looks more like kind of a battle zone type approach. So I would not be in favor of putting those signs at the, the entry point. My last comment that, and of course, I'm opposed to the motorcycle. My last comment would be that contained within that 2010 report, which was not mentioned by the chief, was statistics which showed compared Kensington against six other comparable communities, and showed that Kensington had the lowest incident of traffic accident rates of any of the six communities. So I think it's important to remember that this is not a community where we have a high rate of vehicle accidents, and therefore probably a non-compliance. And my last point would be along those same lines, is I can't tell, I have been stopped probably on two or three occasions in my life by police and highway patrol officers going over the speed limit, in which, and in those cases, they gave me a warning and I went on my way. And I can tell you, I remembered that, and I carried that with me for months and months as a reason why I should be very grateful and stay within the speed limit. So I think that a zero tolerance policy sometimes has the, the reverse effect. It, it, it makes people angry, and I think that if, if this community needs any sort of healing, it's a healing between the citizens of this community and their police department. And I'm concerned that something where we're enforcing a, what is Tanama to a zero compliance is going to produce that result. But I'm, I'm certainly in agreement that we should enforce the laws, it's just how you go about doing it.
We have to finish up, and we're running late. We have a lot of business to do.
Okay, I remembered. I support the motorcycles, but I hope we have well-trained people that use them. I heard that we had accidents with the earlier ones.
All right. Come on up, Celia.
I would say that if the goal here is to educate people so that they're better drivers and that there is greater safety, it would be very nice to try to educate people who may not know the vehicle code as well as we all ought to, and this includes Pat, it includes me, and all the others, and that is articles in the Outlook that would sort of tell people, remind them what the vehicle code is. There are, maybe a sign that would be posted on some of the crosswalks, reminding people that the pedestrian has the right of way or something. And the other thing is that I think that of the measures that you recommended, I prefer to do things incrementally. I think this sign is an excellent idea. It does always remind me of what the maximum speed is, and I would like to approach that just to have the sign. Let's evaluate that, see how that works, and then move on perhaps to other things.
Hi, I just have a couple things. I'll try to be concise.
Say your name, please, to record. Trish Mendel?
Yep.
Thanks.
So actually, Director Cordova, I appreciate your comment about the visual aspect, the aesthetics of the sign. I also feel like I think that's important, but I understand also that there's certain requirements for a traffic sign. I do think that it also, when I first initially saw it, it also just looks like a lot on the sign, but I actually don't get the impression, as some people do, about that making us feel like a more battle zone-like community. I don't feel like that. I feel like it's, I actually feel kind of safer and protected and like, oh, there's my little town, and it's saying that we have to be really careful with our traffic and drive carefully because my children live here, that kind of thing. So I don't have those feelings. I like them. I like the idea. My other question was regarding officers walking. Does that have the same kind of requirement in terms of a training program as being on a bicycle? I don't know if you can answer that now or later.
What do you mean by requirement? What do you mean, like a walking beat?
Right, yeah. As you mentioned, the mountain bikes would require some training programs with walking.
No, there's no, no specific training requirement for the walking beat.
Okay.
But then they don't have any ability to respond to calls for service when necessary, and/or respond and conduct a enforcement stop if it's, if the vehicle doesn't stop right away. Typically, what happens when you do that, you have two officers on duty. One would be pointing, directing to pull someone over, and another person's a chase car.
And we don't have, we don't do that. We have one only on duty?
What we do.
Okay. So I've heard a lot of interest for the walking beat. I also wanted to, at the coffee that we had with the detective, there was just a concern, and this may have already been brought up to you, but there was a concern that when you submit a traffic issue on the website, that people don't get any kind of acknowledgement that their complaint or comment was received? So I don't know if you've heard that already.
He did describe, discuss that with me. That was a great comment that I was not aware of, and we are going to fix that.
Okay. The other thing I had a question about was the language, the maximum enforcement versus the maximum compliance. I also like the maximum compliance language, but you mentioned the grants, and I was wondering, then when you expounded, you said that the grant funding would be possible for more signs like this? Is that what that was?
Not necessarily, well, it's all part of potential grants. I mean, I think both may work. I prefer maximum enforcement because from my mentality of law enforcement, that's what it is. We enforce traffic safety, so, you know, that's just a preference of mine.
Right.
I could look to see if that's an issue. It may or may not necessarily be an issue. I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Compliance seems softer to me.
Thank you.
Compliance also suggests a behavior on the part of the driver, you know, it's our responsibility to comply. You're not buying that.
No. Just my preference.
Can I actually suggest something here, since this is your first reading of this? Perhaps you can bring it back at the next meeting, a little more refined after you've heard these comments? Is that something you'd be prepared to do?
Well.
What do you want us to do? What's your, what's your question?
I'd like you to, I'd like you to, to receive the report, and you've already made comments that I'm aware of, obviously, for at least item number four, but I'd like you just to receive the report and...
Could I make a motion, though, that we allow GM Hart to purchase the signs and the Lake, I want to say Lake District, the Lake Company's speed signs?
Traffic Solutions.
Thank you. Traffic Solutions. Poles and six, is it six poles and two signs?
Sure.
Plus batteries and...
Right. It's all included, it's all included, and it was included in the budget.
It was included, and approximately $7,000.
Correct.
That we authorized at that time, and I would like to, to make a motion that we allow Mr. Hart to do that tonight, or to, in the next. Boy, I'm really...
And I hear the language and about the amount of verbiage and words on the sign, and then we can take that back and try to, we work that.
When I was saying signs, I just meant the speed signs.
I know.
The speed signs.
Right. And I, I hear what people have said, and it probably is a lot, but I wanted to say a lot, and I can try to trim that down a little bit so it's more succinct.
So back to the lake signs. You actually don't need authorization to purchase two of those, right? They're not over...
I would, I told you I'd come back before I purchased them, but you've already given me budgetary authority to spend them.
But they themselves are not at your $5,000 limit, right? They're much less than that, aren't they?
Yeah, for each, for one, yes, but they're already part of the budget.
Well, you want, you were going to get two, right?
Yes.
And the total cost of two is what?
It's like $7,000 in the budget.
For two? I thought they were cheaper than that. All right, okay. All right.
I just made, when I presented the budget, I advised you that I wanted to come back and ask for permission, all right, after the presentation. That was it.
So, Rochelle, I'm sorry, your motion was...
That, that, and there'll be time to, that we acknowledge that Mr. Hart will purchase six poles and two speed signs from...
Oh, that's the board direction? Yeah, okay.
It's for me.
But we have that public comment, I think that was great.
Since these are county roads, possibly the county can add up some of the money for it. And the additional thing could be, is that these things could be made permanent with solar panels, as you have, as you have on North Arlington.
Yeah, they, they could be, but the county tends to be very fiscally prudent, and it's difficult to get some money out of them. Yeah.
I have one question about the point Andy just made. Do we have to get county permission to install these on a temporary basis?
They, they don't have a problem with it, but I am working with them on, on that. They don't want to maintain it, they don't want to do anything with it.
But it is in the right of way. Some of it will be in the right of way, and you'll need a permit.
Correct, which they have no control over.
Yeah, that's public works.
Okay, so we're treating this as a first reading, but we're saying go ahead and purchase the, the signs, right? Do we need to vote on that?
I think that's general board direction.
Yeah, okay. All right.
So do we need to give you a motion, or just the sense of the board that you can go ahead and buy those?
The sense of the board is fine with me, is all I need.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay, very good.
And then you'll return with the rest of this.
Say that again, record.
You'll return with the rest of these items at a different time.
A modified version, sure.
Okay, we're running out of time here. I would like to jump to new business item 8A. This is reviewing and considering approving revisions to Board Policy 5010.10, changing the start time of all regular meetings of the Board of Directors from 7:30 PM to the new, to a new start time of 6:00 PM. This is a board action item, first reading. Pat, I think you had first suggested this. Do you want to brief it?
I did. I do think that we have to make sure that the community's business gets done, and since there's been some objection to going past 10 o'clock, it seems to me that our alternatives to start are a little bit earlier, because to get all the business done within two and a half hours is quite a challenge, as you have seen. Tonight, we spent how much time on one item, and I think it was a great discussion. I'd hate to limit that discussion, but not be able to get to other things that are important in the agenda. So my suggestion is that we start at 6:00 instead of 7:30. That would mean closed session would start at 5:00. If the directors who vote against going past 10:00 continue, going to continue to vote against going past 10:00.
Board members, any discussion?
My only concern is that if we start at 5:00, and 6:00 is fine, I mean, I think that's, if you start at 5:00, you're kind of guaranteeing that anyone who's not retired or has a very flexible schedule won't be able to attend, and you're kind of guaranteeing that, that everyone won't be able to have dinner, which...
Or leave work.
I mean, the early bird, we should all get used to the early bird special, but I just, that would be my concern, that a five-plus hour meeting, I think that does start to cause tempers to fray and coherent thought to break down.
I couldn't agree with you more, except that if we're not going to go past 10 o'clock, I think 7:30 is a perfectly reasonable starting time, frankly, and if we have to go past 10:00, we do. And it should be noted that we are not the only community that goes past 10:00. It is regularly the practice of most city council meetings go well past 10:00. We've had one meeting that went till 1:00 in the morning. I understand, but it's similar, too, the kind of business, well, I'm not going to get in a dialogue with you. In any case, given the amount of participation we have, which I think is great, I think that we have to find a solution. And if we're going to have this rule that certain directors are going to continue absolutely to vote against going past 10:00 regardless of anything that's on the agenda that has to be taken care of, we have to find another way to do that. We are elected to serve the public and to get the public's business done, and that's what we need to do. And this artificial limitation of 10:00 is ridiculous in my mind. So the only solution I see right now is to start earlier. There may be another solution to vote to extend the meetings beyond 10:00, to take out that part of the policy manual, but right now, we aren't doing that.
Well, luckily, I mean, there is some reference in the packet. It's, I wrote a letter under correspondence, page 72, 73, and 74. This is a first reading, so I'm not going to go too much into it, but the arbitrary ending does occur both in Albany and in El Cerrito of 10:00 and 10:30 respectively, that Piedmont doesn't, as I note, Piedmont doesn't have a set ending time, but doing an average of their last 10 regular meetings, you come to an ending time of 2 hours and 2 minutes. Richmond and Berkeley do have longer meetings, but as I said, they have 100,000 plus people. You would typically imagine that would happen. I might like to see a second meeting a month as needed, or the occasional special meeting, but I appreciate the idea of starting earlier to get business done.
I think it puts a stronger, a higher burden on people to come to meetings twice a month, particularly people with families and with other obligations. I also think doing an average of when meetings start and stop is irrelevant, since you don't know, number one, how long their public comments are allowed, whether there's a limitation on how long those comments can be, what kinds of issues they're dealing with, et cetera, et cetera.
Oh, but you read the agenda, and you know how long their public comments usually always posted, the rules of such.
And listen, El Cerrito's agenda, as Director Sheris Watt pointed out, actually states that the reason they cut their meetings at 10:00 or 9:30.
10:30.
10:30. It's because they feel that decorum on the dais, you know, is attenuated by late meetings, and that judgment and context sort of go south, and we're certainly no exception here. Since I have the Fire Board, a Fire Board member here, your meetings are quite a pleasure to attend. Tell me how you do it. I'm sorry, Linda?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
There, there, my name is Larry Nagel, and I'm the Director of the Kensington Fire Protection District. I would like to point out one additional option that I learned about in the special districts class that I took, and that is, every special district's board has the option of continuing a meeting. That would mean that at 10:00, you make a motion to continue the meeting the next day at 7:00 or whatever, and there is no additional notice required, other than you have to put up a piece of paper on the outside door saying that the meeting has been continued and will be held tomorrow, will begin, continue tomorrow at 7:00 PM. This may be, this is another option that you have. I think, I, I'm not a lawyer, but I think it's a perfectly legal option. You're not violating any California state laws, I don't think. And you could start at... at 7:30 and stop at 10:00, and if you have additional work to do, you just do it the next day.
I guess we're into public comments. Go ahead, Linda.
Sorry. Linda Lipscomb.
Right as well.
I'm sorry, there's not that much law on this subject. However, it was cited in a case with which some of you may be familiar, the Schwartz Bird et al. versus KPPCSD, where the 10:00 meeting cutoff was at issue, and in that opinion, which held that there was no there there, there was a case cited, which is the Holbrook case. The Holbrook case involved two city council members who brought a lawsuit to force council meetings to close by 11:00 p.m., and the case largely focused on standing, but there was a considerable discussion of the Brown Act requirements of public access. And I'll quote from that opinion, the Holbrook opinion. "The very remedy that the councilmen's," I'm going to say councilmen instead of the petitioners, "the very remedy the councilmen seek, the limit on the opportunity for members of the public to address the city council, runs counter to the Brown Act's mandate of providing an opportunity for the public to directly address legislative bodies on matters of interest to the public that are within the body's subject matter jurisdiction before or during the body's consideration of that matter. The council members demand that the city council be commanded to adjourn and complete their meetings prior to 11:00 p.m. and enjoined from holding any meeting which stays in session beyond 11:00 p.m. We," they mean the Court of Appeal, "are unable to reconcile these demands with the council members' assertion that their claims do not in any way curfew city or council member's speech or petition. How may the city freely exercise its First Amendment rights or anything else after 11:00 p.m. under this claim while at the same time it is to be compelled to conclude all meetings by 11:00 p.m.?" And the Court of Appeal denied the request of the council members. This arose because we have one director who has pledged never to vote for an extension of the meeting, and it takes, under our current policy, a supermajority of four directors to continue a meeting. We have actually had a situation in which the public discussion was cut off so that the discussion could go on with a private taxpayer of subject matter which was on the agenda that evening by the admission of a director now sitting on the board. It is most likely, in my view, having, even with this sparse legal authority, but this seems very clear to me that it's a violation of the Brown Act to cut off the public discussion.
I think it would really be prudent for there to be more than one meeting a month. I think it would be prudent for there to be more than one board meeting a month to conduct the business of the board, because it is clear that it's not getting done by 10:00, and these are interesting and important meetings, and one always welcomes and urges the public to participate, and we do not want people not to be able to participate because we're starting so early. Also, it is important that people who run for the board be able to return from work. Many people are working, and I think that one has to acknowledge that people who work need to get home and also perhaps eat dinner.
That would be me.
I have been to meetings where it is impossible for you... I hear you when you say that you can't get to a finance committee meeting by 6:00 because you're in Sacramento, all right? It's a hardship for you, so allow...
Just, I want to be clear about one thing. We are averaging way more than one meeting a month. We're having special meetings, we're having extra closed sessions, we're having a lot more than one meeting a month already, plus subcommittee meetings, so we're doing a lot already.
I said board meetings, and I think that last month was unusual, or maybe...
These are board meetings. We have special board meetings.
Yes, I think the four board meetings last month was unusual. That was not what was routinely happening.
If you look at the average, we're averaging a lot more than one a month.
Not board meetings, but I'm not going to argue that with you.
Special board meetings and closed sessions, yes.
Well, the public doesn't get to participate very much in the closed sessions. What I wanted to point out, what I wanted to point out, are you listening, Lynn? Thank you. Oh, I like your smiling face, and Chuck's, too. The policy and...
I always have a smile for you, Maybry. You know it.
Thank you. The, the policy, I shouldn't laugh, the policy and procedures specifies 10:00 because that's a reasonable hour for a lot of the geriatric citizens in this community, excuse me. But additionally, not only do they think a reasonable stopping time is important, they think it is important enough that they call for a four-fifths vote to extend the meeting rather than just a simple majority, and I had proposed several solutions. I think 6:00 start time is a little early. 7:00, 6:45 would give you a little more time to conduct some more business. Thank you.
Rick Curtis, I'm a member of the ad hoc committee. Members of the ad hoc committee will know that I was the hard ass that wanted to make sure that we went as long as we had to go into the night to get the damn job done because we had so much to do. Not doing that cost us some months of progress, and I think has served the community ill, although we've tried to make up for it at the end by piling information out to you all. The committee has shut it down at 10:00 and not gotten, excuse me, that the board has shut it down at 10:00 and not gotten the job done, when it's the single most important job, i.e. passing a budget, is kind of appalling to me. I'm sorry I wasn't here for that. I personally would have a much easier time dealing with one meeting a month where I got here and stayed, you know, it's enough of an assault on my domestic tranquility to come here for a whole night. I'd rather just stay until it's done. That's me personally. If it starts earlier and I have to rearrange my workday and my commute so I can get over here, I'll try and do that, but I'd rather the commitment be on the part of the board to get the job done. I understand that it's very hard for people in the audience, me too, to stay late, especially when I have to get up at 5:30 or 6:00 for a call to people who are overseas. It's not exactly easy, but the important thing is that we get the job done. It's much harder for me to find a random day, some other time in the month, to come to another meeting than it is to figure out on a day that I have to come early or stay late and deal with those consequences. So, I just want to articulate those issues from my perspective and hope that the recalcitrance in the face of what has been a lot of work for the board to do doesn't persist.
I'd like to make a comment. When we were voting on the MOU, we had a board director who wanted to cut off public comment to catch a flight, okay? I'm not going to, you know, take this, I'm not going to be admonished for exercising a vote that I'm authorized to exercise as a standing board member. I find that when meetings end at 10:00, they're much more collegial. People seem more relaxed, nicer. At 9:30, it starts to unravel, and I don't want to be subjected to that kind of hostility when I'm trying to make the best decision for this community, and there are too many distractions. I found today's meeting to be, you know, somewhat better and more productive. I thought the traffic discussion was excellent. I think we're more efficient, but, you know, it's agenda management, and it's board meeting management, and it is ensuring that we have public comment move along, but, you know, I don't fault anyone for having to leave early to go on vacation or work or miss a meeting. You're entitled to have your life, but I'm not going to stay here until 1:00 in the morning and be berated by another board member or members of the public when I'm trying to do my job and to make an informed, responsible decision. It's not good work.
I don't think you've ever been berated for anything that was made up, anyway. Go ahead.
Right on cue.
Well, you know, I haven't, Ashley, I complained a while ago, Vanessa, about some stuff you wrote me. I never put that in a board packet. I think maybe I should, then people would know what I'm talking about.
This is exactly what I'm talking about. Enough.
Go ahead.
I'd like to focus a little bit on what Fire Board Director Larry Nagel proposed just a few speakers back, which seemed to me eminently reasonable and a good way out of this. When he proposed that meetings which have to terminate at 10:00 be continued, I believe I saw our lawyer nod and say that is a legal procedure. How do you feel about this board so you have to go on to the next day and continue the meeting?
Okay, one thing about that, Andrew, is that people don't...
Anthony.
I'm sorry, Anthony.
All right.
I'm getting tired already. It's not even 10:00.
Mostly, it's Arthur, but not by you.
Not by me. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. You know, the only problem I see with that is notice to the public. If somebody comes here wanting to, thinking that they're going to get an agenda item discussed, then it doesn't get discussed because the board meeting ends, oh, we're putting it off till tomorrow, then they have to come twice, and they might not have tomorrow free. They don't get...
Well, life is full of disappointments, you know? Let them live with disappointment that their item, I've been waiting for an item on our agenda to be discussed for three meetings, but I still keep coming back. And I do have another practical question. How many votes does it take of this board to change the starting time of the meeting? Thank you.
And I just want to say something about continuing the meeting to the next day. Some of us have obligations that we set up in advance that would not allow us to just continue the meeting to the next day. When we try to find a time that all of us can get together, even when we set it advance, we have problems with people not being able to attend or people not being able to make the dates that we set. It's not that easy to just say, oh, well, today's the 11th, tomorrow's the 12th, let's just keep continuing the meetings. People have schedules, people have lives, people have commitments and work obligations.
One quick, sorry, Mr. Doro. I would recommend if we were, we would go to a standardization of the second and fourth Thursday of the month, something like that, that, and then maybe you jets in the second Thursday if it's not needed, that would be, so it's a regular standing date, and we're not, we know we have the building, it's on people's mindset, and then, you know, we agenda accordingly.
That's reasonable. Go ahead.
At the risk of stating the obvious, I'm Paul Doro, by the way. You have, I think by custom, about 12 more minutes before you have to take a vote on whether to extend past 10:00, and assuming that you are not going to extend past 10:00, it's pretty clear to me that you're not going to be able to discuss everything that's on the agenda, so I would urge the board to take a moment and decide which of these items you are going to discuss, and then get on with it.
It sounds like we're finishing up with this as a first reading, and we've gotten comments, so I think we can move on to the next item. I think we should go to the, again, anticipating that we're not going to go beyond 10:00, the likelihood that we won't. Item 8B. "Board discussing possibly changing the order and manner in which it takes general public comment for items not on the agenda." Again, another first reading.
Excuse me, may I propose that we take the action item first, item C?
I don't think we have enough time to discuss. Yeah, I think we can talk about, it's okay.
Well, we had a suggestion by Mr. Carlson, I think it was, a few meetings ago, that we ought to, sorry about that, we ought to move public comment to the end of the meeting instead of having it come up first. The manual seems to be silent on when public comment is taken. Right now, it does say that public comments will be taken. It imposes a limit of five minutes per commenter and 20 minutes per subject commented on. As you all know, we have not tried to enforce that 20-minute rule, at least as far as I know in the past. I think it would be a good idea to maybe limit initial public comment to, say, 20 minutes at the beginning of a meeting, and then if people still want to comment on matters not on the agenda, remember, people get to comment on each matter that's on the agenda, and those matters, I think, should take priority for comment. We could take the rest of public comment at the end of all the business that's conducted if people want to stay and they want to give comments on items not on the agenda. So, that's what I would propose.
I think it's a really good idea in terms of the public knowing what's going to be discussed at a meeting and where they can weigh in. I think it's really critical to make sure that we, we're going to have this shortened amount of time to do our business, that we focus on those things that are noticed on the agenda, take public comment on those, and put the additional comments that are just general in nature at the end of the meeting. I think the idea of having 20 minutes in the beginning for any of those comments is a good one, but strictly enforcing that and then shoving all the rest of them to the end of the meeting, that makes absolute sense to me in terms of getting the work of the community done and not just making this a place where people can comment about their points of view that may or may not be relevant to the business at hand on the agenda.
I'm just curious here. Rochelle and I are scratching our heads trying to find sample language that shows just what the proposal's going to look like. We don't see any here, and...
We can't read it.
Well, it's not that we can't, you can't have a first reading, and frankly, I'm a little puzzled what this language would look like, so without the language, I'm just, I mean, I like the idea of trying to rearrange a schedule so we can accommodate the crucial issues during...
Good point, good point. Ashley, I'm not even necessarily proposing a change in the manual, which technically would require a first reading. What I wanted to do is have a, you know, discussion of this issue at this meeting, and we could agendize at the next meeting that we're going to adopt that practice, you know, just as a matter of running the board, but we don't, there's nothing in the manual that forces us to put it in the manual, and so we could just decide we're going to make it a practice to do that. I just wanted to give some advance notice to the public that we're thinking about it, get your comments, get board comments and public comments, and if, you know, I think it's a good matter to agendize it for the next meeting, I will, and I'll ask us to vote on that.
Well, it says this is an action item with a first reading. There's no language on the agenda. It's how it's agendized, so perhaps...
You just heard the language. You heard my proposal. You can think about it, and I'll agendize it next meeting. We don't actually need a first reading, as far as I can tell. Randy, do you have any thoughts on that?
You guys just published it as such.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not currently in the policy manual, I mean, right now, I think what the policy manual says about the agendas set by the president along, you know, in coordination with the general manager, so that's the way it works. If you're going to change how you've done it a long time, it makes sense to talk about it with the board, but I don't think you need to have, notwithstanding what the agenda says, I don't think you're required legally to have two readings of this.
Right, so we're talking about it this meeting. I want people to be thinking about this and having advance notice and give comments now if they want, and we'll take it up again at the next meeting.
The one thing to keep in mind, and this kind of blends in a little bit with your last item, is, you know, there is going to be an issue if it's 9:50 and you haven't had public comment, and under the Brown Act, members of the public are allowed to comment at each meeting. So, maybe rather than putting it at the end, what you do is say it's going to be at 9:30 so that you're clear that all the members of the public who want to address issues not on the agenda have the opportunity to do so between 9:30 and 10:00.
Got it.
If I'm not mistaken, Randy, even, you can't cut off public discussion at 10:00 if people haven't had a chance to say anything yet, and that's the essence of the Brown Act. If you're going to have people come in and talk at 9:30, and the public comment's going to go beyond 9:30, cutting it off without letting them speak is, isn't that a violation of the Brown Act?
I think that's right. I guess what I'm anticipating is if you have 20... I guess what I'm anticipating is if you have 20 minutes at the beginning and 30 minutes at the end, in most cases I think you're going to be able to accommodate all the public comment that's going to happen. I agree if there's a, if there's somebody standing up there at 10:00 who's not had the opportunity to speak on an item not on the agenda, I think you need to accommodate that speaker and allow that to finish.
Well, here's my problem, we've had public comments go for two hours and that means the agenda gets compressed into zero itself, so I mean, I'm all for public comment, but how do we manage it so people can have their say and we can still do the business of the board?
Maybe I'm feeling free to talk now in my last meeting, I'm in my last 20 minutes, but I tell you one...
We're locking the doors.
One thing to realize is that most places have a three-minute limit on public comment, not five, and they pretty strictly enforce that and that's something else to, you know, to consider. If you've been, it's been five minutes forever, that's a policy call for you folks, but I'll just tell you, as a matter of practice, three minutes is the normal approach and if you have 30 speakers, sometimes what they'll do is reduce that to two minutes or even one minute and some folks, you know, some places actually have rules that will say that. It's three minutes if it's up to 10 speakers, if it's 10 to 20, it's going to be two minutes, if it's over 20, it's going to be one minute apiece. There's lots of options to help address that issue if you want to consider.
And that would be a policy manual revision if we were going to go there. That would take a first reading and a vote after that next meeting. Tell anything more?
So this is, I'm sorry. Speak.
I didn't see you standing up, so go ahead please, I didn't see you come, I'm sorry.
I really think that there needs to be some discretion that this board has with how many people and what period of time you will allow people to speak. I think that the time when there were two hours of comments perhaps was just after the Reno scandal broke. Were you going to cut people off after 20 minutes? Don't even answer, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Well, I can tell you, no I wasn't, that's the point.
Yes.
I want people to have their say.
Exactly. And so I think you need flexibility here and I think if you have 150 people in a room, all of whom are enraged by what has just happened, that it is time to put aside what you have on the agenda, I'm sorry, but that takes precedent. The people who come to attend meetings here are trying to express their opinion and trying to have some opportunity to influence how this board is operating.
And Celia, I appreciate your comment more than I can tell you, but the problem is then we have an artificial cutoff at 10:00. So we get the comments we want to have heard, but then the meat of the agenda itself doesn't get addressed.
Well, I thought I heard Celia, I thought I heard Celia saying that we should be, use our discretion to...
We need to have discretion and at a time like that, I'm sorry, but there...
I totally agree.
Good.
I think we're actually agreeing here, so again, this is a matter of not necessarily the manual, but what our practice is going to be in meetings, so it might be that our standard practice is the 20-minute first off and the rest later, but when there's a significant event out there that brings out a lot of people, we have to acknowledge that and do it differently, which we can do.
I personally think that it cuts down public opportunity to speak if they're, after the first 20 minutes, everybody is shunted off to the very end.
Actually, you know, there's a lot of talk about, we have a lot of business to accomplish. Part of how I do this job is to sit here and listen to what people have to say and if you have people here at 7:30 and the attendance falls off as the hours pass, then I'm looking at an empty room at 11:30 with no feedback when I know it was full just a few hours before and we didn't hear what these people have to say. I think two meetings a month provide more opportunities for folks to participate in a way that's meaningful and for a director like myself to make decisions that I feel are just better informed by the community I'm here to serve, not just what I think is the right thing to do and I need that feedback. And I, you know, I understand this is something we may not come to terms on, I wouldn't mind starting the meeting at 7:00, but that's all I have to say about it tonight.
I think having a split comment period is a formula for acrimony. I think you're going to get people who want to speak at the beginning, who come up against the 20-minute time limit, are going to be angry and frustrated and cut off and they're not going to want to wait to the end. And I think they're going to direct this acrimony to the chairman.
Anybody from the public, anybody else?
We don't, it's a...
Doing a motion tonight? Oh, it's time for the 10:00. Do I have a motion to continue beyond 10:00?
I move to continue the meeting beyond 10:00 so we can discuss the request for proposal as well as the other items on the agenda.
I second the motion. Any discussion?
I'll make a friendly amendment that we extend to 10:15.
Yeah, we can legally do that, I'll go to 10:15.
Actually, I'll go the whole distance, I want the agenda done tonight.
Okay, then.
So, I'm not, I'm not, no, I want to, I'm voting to extend the meeting until we're done.
Okay, we tried, I tried.
All right, so we need a roll call.
Director Cardova?
No.
President Gillette?
Yes.
President Wells?
Yes.
President Henry?
Yes.
Vice President Lee?
No.
I didn't get a chance to comment on this last issue we were talking about and I'm sorry. There's two things going on here with how we schedule our public discussions and how we schedule our agenda and both of them are really crucial to manage the business of the community. I agreed with what Rick said about having to come to two meetings a night, it's very hard for anybody realistically to commit that much time. We've done it this last couple of months because we had no choice, but we do have a choice about how we manage our time and our communications and our agenda and I'm really pushing hard to make sure we do that efficiently so we get the business done. Tonight, we're not going to get to this RFP unfortunately and that's part of the most crucial thing I came to do tonight and it's not going to happen. And I just think we need to be cognizant of what are obligations here. What Vanessa said about not being fresh at 9:00 as people leave, that suggests we should start the meetings at 6:00 and that's fine, I'm all in favor of that, I didn't get a chance to comment on that last time. But folks, we have to get the business of this community done and we can't have artificial limits on when we do it or else we aren't going to get anything done at all. And that's not the way to run this community's government, I don't think it is. It's hard to stay late, it's even harder not to do the business we were elected to do.
I just want to build on that because the fact that we're not going to get to the RFP tonight means that we will be delayed yet again on fixing this building, where children are playing and we know that there are issues regarding the safety of it. I just find it astounding that people are willing to let this continue month after month after month.
Well, excuse me, I asked that we arrange the order to finish up business with the action items that were on the agenda. The president disagreed with me.
Shall we move on, because, I mean ironically, I'm actually the committee chair of this and for months after Measure L, nothing happened on this building until I took it over in March last year.
We've made more progress with Vice President Sheris Watt manning the parks projects than we ever have in this community.
I hate to say that, but that's a real dig at me and I find that insulting. That's just not fair. For two years, we worked diligently to pass Measure L so we would have a decent building. Had we gotten it passed, we'd be in a different building right now. But to say that all of a sudden our work is totally discounted, we worked incredibly hard to pass that initiative and we worked very diligently for the better part of three years. So please, don't give me that kind of insult, it's not necessary and I resent it.
Well, I didn't mean to insult you, I had no idea who was in charge of the parks.
Who do you think was?
Me, I was in charge of the park building.
All right, well, maybe, can we get any progress done on this item, Rochelle?
Yes, let me present to you. Here is the draft RFP. This draft was approved by the Park Buildings Committee, vetted by Mr. Riddle. It is, the project objective, "We're seeking proposals for completion of architectural drawings and construction documents for the improvement of the Kensington Community Center." We are hoping to begin sending this out tomorrow to interested parties with a closing date of Wednesday, August 31st. All proposals will be sent to interim manager, General Kevin Hart, and the requirements and scope of the project are listed on page two. Anyone who's interested in touring the facility would contact me and I would, and the proposals would come before the board and must adhere to all provisions listed on page four.
Director Sheris Watt, this was approved by council, right?
Yes.
So my understanding is okay.
This was approved by council, it was approved, amended and approved by the members of the Park Buildings Committee at their last meeting.
I have no comments.
Questions or concerns?
I have some questions.
Okay.
It says that it's anticipated that the total project budget would be $1 million or less.
Yes.
What does that mean?
Well...
For the alternatives or just for the modifications that are listed above the alternatives?
For everything included.
So how do you come to that conclusion when the previous committee, I think, and I wasn't part of that, but if I'm remembering correctly, said that just to do basically nothing would be $750,000 and if there are members of the park committee here, maybe you can explain this, this came up at the KCC meeting, which is why I'm asking that.
Because we're considering modifications, we're going based on our seismic analysis and ADA report with three alternate considerations, but essentially, we are hoping that our costs have been projected around $650,000 with the additional idea that there's probably 35% in soft costs added to that and unknowns, but that was, under a million was essentially the budget that we thought we could...
Based on what, I guess is my question.
Based on the $207,000 that the KPPCSD has set aside, plus the addition of the $158,000 grant. What we essentially started with was...
Rochelle, are you working backwards from a million and trying to fund a million or are you saying this is what it will cost to do this project?
No, what we're starting with always was the essential things that must happen for this building to be safe and continue with usage, so that's our starting point. So we started with the seismic and the ADA and then we are working with Environmental Health and Contra Costa County to figure out what modifications we can do to the kitchen and, or will have to or will be necessary or what we can add. But we wanted the architects to know that we were probably dealing with no more than a million dollars because we couldn't, the goal of the Parks Committee was not to go before the community with a bond and we were hoping to fund what was necessary based on the funds that we have.
So one of the things that came up at the KCC meeting is that if you were to make the kitchen a commercial kitchen, it would cost hundreds of thousands of dollars based on the work that was done by the last park committee. Again, I wasn't part of it, I'm just repeating what was said. So did you take that, did you look at what the previous committee had done and the estimates that they had and then make a reasonable, not a wishful, but a reasonable decision that you could do this for a million dollars?
No, we, I mean, yes and no, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that. You'll see with the additional documents, we want the architectural firms to examine the Mueller Caulfield Report. The idea that we have to turn that kitchen into a commercial kitchen isn't necessarily true. I'm in conversation with Amy Leach at Contra Costa Environmental Health. We're hoping that at some point she's going to come and tour the facility. We are not going for a full commercial kitchen, we probably don't have the space for it nor the need, so we're going to be working with her, it's, I've said this all along, I'm sorry for the repeated analogy, it's a crab walk, we keep going scuttling this way and that, or a switchback, whatever you want to be on a trail, headed towards the mountaintop. So that's how we added the million dollars, but until we have the, some information from an architectural firm, we still don't have all the answers and so we can't give a hard and fast projection, but we didn't want anyone coming into this project thinking, "Oh, this is a $3 million deal and we can throw in, you know, gold-plated taps."
Okay, so you actually are working backwards, saying we don't want to spend more than a million dollars and so we're going to see what the architects can propose to within the million dollar range.
And that's why we need this, this...
That's what I was trying to do.
Yeah, sorry if I'm speaking a little...
Have you actually explained to the board what the recommendations of your committee are yet so the board can weigh in on them?
In what way?
Well, I don't, has, I can't recall if we've ever gotten a formal report of all this stuff to the actual board, did I miss that along the way? For example, the ADA reports, I know, I was, I've come to your meetings, so I've seen them in your committee.
No, no, the board has been presented with the ADA report by Gilda Puente Peters and the seismic analysis, in fact, analysis, excuse me, in fact, Mr. Wallace appeared at one of our regular meetings and answered questions in addition to appearing at several committee meetings. So yes, that has come before.
Have they discussed the western wall thing, you're looking at here? Did they have a discussion on that?
No, we have not, because what is, the changes in the western wall are intrinsic to the seismic upgrades. So what we're looking for is both beautification and strengthening of the building, so we're hoping that these, Bart Jones, you know, the architect who did the addition in 1989 on this building, has generously sketched a few drawings for us and given us a few ideas, but we need the, this architect, whomever is chosen, architectural firm, we're hoping that they'll come with their own fresh perspective and give us beautiful things to look at.
And you're giving them a copy of the seismic report?
Yes, so you'll see on additional documents, the ADA analysis, the seismic analysis and the Mueller Caulfield Report will all be attached in a Dropbox file that they can access.
I meant to ask you, where and how will you distribute this out?
So we have a list of architectural firms, I think we have a dozen plus right now that we're going to be interested in approaching or making sure they get this. This will also, of course, go on our website as well as any other recommendations made for social media, we're going to try and spread it where we can, but it's going to be directed because we need it to go to, you know, we're hoping for three or four participants.
And you've, Randy, you've cleared that about how they can distribute it and where they can post it and stuff?
Yeah, yes.
I mean, is there any need to, like for example, there's, in generic, there's all kinds of publications for public construction projects and public works projects. I just want to make sure that we meet the requirements of getting this the widest distribution possible, because if you're trying to bring value added, you have to get a wide dissemination of it all.
No, absolutely, but we are rather targeted, people who are interested in smaller projects on a timeline, locally in the area, and there are requirements in the RFP for them coming to meetings and discussing their drawings.
Well, I think we should just call a vote.
You want to have public discussion on this?
Yeah, anyone who would like to comment?
I have another board comment.
Oh, please.
I think you need more specification, I don't feel prepared to vote on this without getting more detail about exactly what these guys are doing and who the architectural firms are, how you decided what firms are going to send it to, that kind of information seems critical to me. I'm also interested in the scope of the services, how you came up with that, is that the standard?
We both looked at standardized writing, requests for proposals and the Park Building Committee consists of, also has a commercial architect on it, he looked at the proposal and commented, Jim Watt sent it to several architectural firms who were kind enough to look at the scope and give suggestions so... to look at the scope and give suggestions so that it read clearly and...
And our attorney cleared this.
And our attorney.
Mr. President, it's 10 o'clock, and I did speak earlier about having a special meeting. Maybe if there's still questions or issues, we have not taken any public comment about this, maybe we push that to the special meeting later on, and maybe Sheriff Watt can get somebody...
Yeah, I think we should probably do that, I think we're almost there. Oh, that's the Monday? That's the meeting to, one closed session for Monday, right? Yeah, we could turn that into a public meeting as well.
And I just have three other real quick things. I'd also like to publicly thank Randy Riddle for his assistance in me as the general manager and chief of police at times. I'd also like to thank David Spaff for being my cameraman for the day. Appreciate that. And then the third thing would be is that next week is the opening period. If you have any desire to apply to be a board of directors for the Kids, Police, Protection, and Community Services District, it's open tomorrow or next week for a month, essentially a month.
I also want to thank Randy, he's done a really tremendous job. We really appreciate all your service and your very good advice. Many, many thanks.
Yes, thank you, Randy. And also Dave Spaff. He's, just the second time he's had to tough it out through one of these meetings and deal with our crappy equipment, so thank you very much, David.
A motion to adjourn?